Good evening, welcome and thank you everyone in the audience for being here tonight with us. I call this meeting of the Montgomery County School Board to order at 7 o'clock on October 1st, 2019. Please stand for the presentation of colors by the Christiansburg High School Corps of Cadets.
Forward, arms. Forward, march. Mark time, march. Color guard, halt. Present, arms. Request permission to post the colors.
Please post the colors.
Order, arms. Forward, march. Colors, post.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Forward, march. Color guard, halt. About face. Reverse colors, march. Forward, march. Color guard, halt.
Thank you, you may be seated. Tonight, we have school board representatives. Auburn from Auburn High School is Mary Pinoagua Ugarte and from Blacksburg High School, Jordan Stevens. They will read our mission, vision, and core value statements.
We would like to welcome all of our guests to our school board meeting tonight. Here in Montgomery County, our mission is that every student will graduate career and college-ready and become a productive, responsible citizen. Our vision is to inspire learning by providing a nurturing environment, positive relationships, high expectations, and continuous growth.
Here in Montgomery County, our values for everyone include physical safety and emotional well-being, mutual trust and respect, open communication, accountability, engagement in lifelong learning, and cultural diversity. Thank you for coming.
Thank you both of you for being here. Next item is adopting our agenda. May I have a motion to adopt our agenda as presented?
Second.
I have a motion, second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next item is Dr. Meyer's announcements. Dr. Meyer.
Okay, sure. A lot of great things that are happening. I think next Friday is the last day of the first nine weeks. So we're a quarter of the way through the school year already. It's absolutely amazing, I know. But a lot of wonderful things are happening. Something that we had yesterday, we had a support staff job fair yesterday. And this was for community members to come in and apply for jobs, interview for jobs. And with that, we had several students who actually came in. A lot of our juniors, some of our juniors and seniors who came in who wanted part-time jobs with us. And we hired seven students yesterday. Four for the food service program and three as custodians yesterday. So just real excited about that and having those students working for us in our schools. We started the strategic planning process. We had the community summit last week and it was well-attended. And we look forward to continuing with the strategic planning team in a couple of weeks. We'll be spending three days together, starting that process. So looking forward to that. Some athletic news. Just real excited, you know, of course, I think we have some Blacksburg state champions here tonight. But we also, between Blacksburg High School and Auburn High School, the Wells Fargo gives out six cups a year to six of the divisions. And Auburn won the Wells Fargo Cup for Division One and Blacksburg won the Wells Fargo Cup for Division Four. So that's a really high achievement. Well, in the past, what's happened is with those recipients is they've been going to and being presented those awards at the University of Virginia football game every year. And we've won it, Blacksburg's won it more than anyone in the state. Auburn's won at least two of the last three or four years. And, you know, I suggested, since we keep winning it, why don't we do it at a tech game? And so the actual winner for Division Two was George With. All right? So that's three right here in the area. So, yes, on October 12th, at the Virginia Tech Rhode Island game, our schools will be presented there with the Wells Fargo Cup. So just real excited about that. Don't have to go too far and that is, that's awesome. Very excited. I've been able to attend some events. I'd like to thank Blacksburg High School for inviting me to the homecoming parade a couple of weeks ago. Had a lot of fun with that. Went to the Auburn Eastmont football game a couple Fridays ago. That was a great atmosphere out there as well. And also like to congratulate the Christiansburg High School Chamber Ensemble. They, last Thursday, they sang "With Foreigner." And absolutely amazing. Saw some video of that and they were, they did an absolutely wonderful, wonderful job. Something that I would like to quickly talk to the school board about, that, something we're exploring in the very, very infant stages. Virginia has several governor schools around the state. Of course, we have a math and science governor school in Pulaski that we send students to. There are only three governor schools for the arts in Virginia. And I believe two are in the Chesapeake area. One is either Richmond or Northern Virginia. Do you remember one of those areas, okay? But of course, there's no governor school for the arts anywhere near us. These governor schools are basically planned with several school divisions in the planning process. But we're going to lead the exploration of the possibility of a governor school for the arts here in Montgomery County. And actually, it's going to take a couple of years to put together if we all move forward with it. We've even approached the possibility, no commitments yet, but the possibility of actually having the governor school for the arts at the Moss Center at Virginia Tech, where that's where the school would actually be every day. And I've already talked to several superintendents who are interested in that. But it would be the best of the best in our school division and area counties that would be accepted to this program. A lot of things to iron out. There's different ways you can do this type of governor school. But it would be something really special and very popular, I think, for southwest Virginia. And so, any questions on that?
Awesome.
Sounds like something to move forward with. Excellent. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next item, in the honors, awards, and recognitions, our student representatives' reports. Who wants to go first?
I can go. At Blacksburg, we have obviously just started our new school year. The students are liking the new school lunch that we have. It's definitely been a big hit. We have a few new school rules. Students are adapting to that pretty well. The new principal is doing a very good job. Our golf program is doing excellent. We had our first pep rally in, I believe, a year or two. We didn't have one any, at all, last year. So that was a big success for us. Fall sports are very successful. We have a dozen new teachers at Blacksburg High School, replacing a third of which are in our history department. We have free application day coming up here soon for seniors to apply at colleges. We have Bruin Fest, which is also coming up, I believe, in the next week. This week, we had Club Fair. At lunches, we were able to explore the opportunities at several different clubs that we have available at Blacksburg High School. We have German exchange students coming next week, so that's going to be a great opportunity for us at Blacksburg High School. Our Corps of Cadets is just getting started. It's very cool to see that community in our school and how they've been leaders. Next, we actually just, for the first year, painted our parking spots. So certain people were able to pay and paint their parking spots in our student parking lot. We just got our first VHSL e-sports team approved. So that's going to be an opportunity at Blacksburg that we're really excited about. E-hall pass is up and running. No interruptions in class, so that's pretty good. Everyone knows how it's working. And then, we are also deciding on our club schedule, which should be finished pretty soon.
Sounds good, lots happening.
What's an e-sports team?
How about Auburn?
So we started our SOAR, our IE, and at Auburn, we call it SOAR. And it runs for 40 minutes a day. We do it throughout the entire week. And students can do their homework, make up missing assignments. We have club days, or we do clubs during that period of time. So, yeah, and then we do college visits and we have guest speakers come in and all that jazz. So then, our marching man placed second place overall in the two-way category at Glenver High School this past weekend. And if you guys want to come, we do have another competition Saturday, October 12th, at George With High School. You guys are all welcome to come. Our football team is three to two on the year and plays at Fort Chiswell this Friday. You guys are welcome to come also. Our college application day will take place on October 23rd. Juniors are scheduled to take the PSAT on Wednesday, October 16th. And our one-act team competes on November 2nd at the Region 1C competition at George With High School. You guys are also welcome to come. You are free. Our golf team advanced to the region tournament and will try and finish in the top two on October 8th at the River Course to advance to the state tournament. The National Honor Society will have their induction ceremony for new members Monday, October 14th, at 6 o'clock, if you guys are wanting to come. And then, our competition cheer team will travel to Graham High School on October 5th. Our FFA club is selling pumpkins and mums, which are flowers. And then, our volleyball team has had a really good season and, yeah.
Lot happening there. Our schools and our students are very busy. Next item will be our school presentation.
Yes, we have a school presentation tonight. It's Christiansburg High School's turn, but what we have done is created it into, not just Christiansburg High School, but it's a program that is now in our entire school district. And that is our new Corps of Cadet program. Mr. Diver?
Yes, so of course, since this was supposed to be, or scheduled to be, Christiansburg High School's presentation evening, we wanted to talk about and have our Corps of Cadets program present. But of course, the Corps of Cadets program is a countywide program. And we're privileged to have representatives from all four schools here this evening. And at this point in time, I'll just turn it over to the Corps of Cadets teacher at Christiansburg High School, Major Jim Conrad.
First off, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to showcase this new program. We're very excited to get it up and off the ground this year with nearly 200 cadets at the four high schools. I've had nothing but good responses from all the other teachers and administrators that I've dealt with at all of the schools. It's going really well. I'd first, though, like to introduce my Blacksburg counterpart, Colin Chavis. And he's got a couple cadets that will be addressing you shortly.
Good evening, board members. I'm Sergeant Colin Chavis. I would like to introduce to you Cadet Gabriel Chasse and Cadet Gio Kamelski.
Good evening, I'm Cadet Chasse. Our mission statement is that every cadet will become an effective leader and an active citizen in their community.
Good evening, my name is Cadet Gio Kamelski. So, the mission of the Montgomery County Corps of Cadets is to instill knowledge, skills, and values into each and every one of the cadets through successful disciplined format of instruction, positive relationships, and high expectations. Thank you for your time.
From Christiansburg High School, I'd like to introduce Cadets Meka Cypress and Ethan Wilson.
Good evening, evening. I'm Cadet Cypress. And the Corps of Cadets focuses on development of leadership skills and community service skills, patriotism, discipline, physical training, teamwork, as well as the fundamentals of military science. Students learn surf lines and importance of overcoming challenges. Classes meet daily and students wear uniform once a week. I joined Corps of Cadets because in the future, I plan on joining the Army. And I want to be mentally and physically prepared for it.
Hi, I'm Cadet Wilson. After-school activities for the Corps of Cadets include the drill team, community service, marksmanship, and color guard. The Corps of Cadets is not affiliated with any branch of the US military and does not require a commitment to the armed services after graduation. I joined the Corps of Cadets because I wanted to surround myself with other individuals who like to work well as a team. And I wanted to catch a glimpse of what the core values of the military mean to so many individuals in the country currently. Thank you.
I'd next like to introduce Anna Blaine. And she's going to talk a little bit about the drill program and then provide a small demonstration.
Good evening, I'm Cadet Blaine. The purpose of drill ceremony is to demonstrate discipline to an individual and the unit. It is used to move a unit from one place to another in an orderly fashion. Drill builds esprit de corps and unity within the unit. We will now demonstrate drill.
All in. Dress right, dress! Ready, front! Present, arms! Order, arms! Hooray, rest! Platoon, attention! Count off!
One, two, three.
Close interval, march! Normal interval, march! Right face. Left face. Right face. File from the left.
Forward.
March.
Forward, march.
Forward, march.
It was correct, yes.
We have a competition amongst all the high schools in the district coming up in November, where all the drill teams from each of the schools will compete against one another. This is the big hunk of the Christiansburg team. They did a great job tonight. Thanks, Anna. Next, I'd like to bring up Dr. Wright. He is my counterpart at Auburn and Eastmont High Schools.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Wright from Eastern Montgomery and Auburn High Schools. And we're going to bring a couple cadets up here to talk about knot tying and ropes and explain what theirs are about. That is Morgan Rosenbaum from Auburn High School and Kaylee Hubbard from Eastern Montgomery High School.
Good evening, I'm Sergeant Hubbard. And knot tying requires discipline and attention to detail and builds confidence and pride. Our knot tying lessons led to and leads to team-building activities that involves rope bridges and rappelling.
Good evening, I'm Sergeant Rosenbaum. Knot tying is not only helpful in this class, but it is also helpful in real-life scenarios such as rescue and fire. Rescue and fire departments often use knot tying to help with rescue situations in rivers and caves.
And to demonstrate some of these knot tying skills, we're going to bring up Hannah Barrett from Christiansburg High School, Joseph Kaminski from Christiansburg High School, and Anna Blaine from Christiansburg High School.
We will see, right here, she's demonstrating square knot, which is not used to join two ends of a rope. Joseph Kaminski is demonstrating the bowline knot. The bowline knot is an end of a rope knot that is used to secure the rope to a stationary object. Sergeant Rosenbaum here has demonstrated the wireman's knot, sometimes called a farmer's knot. It is used to help tighten down the rope when you have something not that you need more tension. Private Blaine is demonstrating the Swiss repel seat, developed by Swiss mountaineers, to use as a quick harness for both rope bridges, climbing, and rappelling. They will now come up and help you learn how to tie the bowline knot.
Pick your knots, huh?
We don't want to pick our knots.
Think you need to do the Swiss out.
Yeah, you do! I got all screwed up in that.
We're ready.
Okay, wait a minute.
I broke this, that's okay. I'm watching.
We're ready.
I'm good. Not good, I'm good. I don't want to screw it up.
I'm doing this, I'm going to be explaining this, how to tie this knot to you. First, what you're going to want to do is take the rope and put it in your left hand with the running end, the shorter end facing away from you with about a foot of slack. Then, you're going to want to go over top and put your palm like this, and then make a loop. So if the running end is on the bottom and the standing end, the longer one is on top. Then, you're going to want to reach through what you've made and pull out a bite.
No, I think it's the long one.
And then, you can let go with your left hand. And then, you're going to want to take the running end and put it through the bite you just made. And then, you're going to want to fold it back over onto itself.
It's as long as that.
And hold it up and then pull tight. So it goes all the way. Do you get it?
I got it because I tried. Pull it tight.
You did get it, yes.
Well, I tried twice before, so.
Thank you, satisfactory. Awesome. That rope is very long.
I'm good. I am perfect. I'll stop by your class. I'll stop by your class and do it. How's that? Thank you so much. You guys are awesome.
Thank you, awesome.
Hey, get Rose back.
Very good. Thank y'all very much. We're now going to see the cadets putting these into actions at the different schools. First, we're going to start with the rope bridge activity at Christiansburg High School. Next, we're going to see the rappelling in action from the cadets at Eastern Montgomery High School.
Picked a Wright song, Dr. Wright. Appreciate that.
We spent the first couple months of the term at all the schools just getting the basics down with all these cadets, getting them uniforms, teaching them how to line up, how to march, how to hold a formation, and learning the basic skills. And we're at the point now where we can start actually developing, you know, delving into the curriculum of leadership, communication, building their confidence, giving them opportunities to actually develop now that they have a basis underneath of them. Culminating this year with them being ready to take the new crop next year and them be the leaders and the trainers next year. And that is our goal, and they're well on track to being there. Thanks again for letting us give you this demonstration tonight. And thanks for all the support that you all have given to this burgeoning program. We appreciate it.
Thanks to the teachers of the classes, thanks to the cadets for being here tonight. That's seven weeks of school.
Yep. That's amazing.
And that's what they've, you've learned a lot in seven weeks. So that's very motivating. Excellent, great job.
What day is the competition?
The competition is November 16th. From, it's in the morning.
Eight to two, sir.
Eight to two. And during that competition, they'll be doing drill, marksmanship, Red Raider. Those three competitions.
It's rope bridges, drill, marksmanship, and sporting event.
A sporting event.
Ultimate frisbee.
Oh, okay. All right, very good. Excellent. That's going to be at Christiansburg High School, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Excellent. All right. And they will be competing in other competitions, hopefully by second semester with other schools around the state in these same types of competitions. And so, very exciting. All right. Next, Ms. Whitaker, if you'd come up to coordinate our awards and recognitions.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to coordinate the recognition component of our program tonight. If Eddie Walters would come forward, please, to recognize our National School Bus Rodeo winners.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Meyer, Annie. It is my pleasure to once again recognize one of our amazing school bus drivers. Kathy Graham competed at the VAPT State School Bus Rodeo Competition on June 17th in Richmond, Virginia. Kathy excelled through the obstacle course and placed first in the state conventional class competition. She then went on to compete at the national competition in Austin, Texas on July 21st, where she placed fifth in the nation in her prospective class. Kathy has driven for Montgomery County Schools for 24 years and currently drives in the Christiansburg area. Kathy is a great example of the wonderful drivers that we have working for Montgomery County Schools, and she should be proud of her accomplishments. Congratulations, Kathy.
Thank you. Next, I'll ask Mr. Pauli to come forward and recognize our Spring State Champions.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. It's very easy to confuse me and Danny Knott, but Danny Knott is actually going to be doing the presentation for the athletics this evening.
Thank you for announcing Mr. Knott.
We don't look anything alike, I'm sorry. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you Mr. Tim Bynum, Principal of Blacksburg High School. He's going to be helping to recognize the Spring Sports State Champions from Blacksburg High School tonight. Mr. Bynum.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Meyer. BHS has won three state titles in 2018-19. Boys Swimming, Girls Indoor Track, and Girls Outdoor Track, and earned the school's 14th Wells Fargo Cup Title, fourth straight, and ninth in the past 11 years. A lot of it went to the fact that our Girls Outdoor Track, led by Coach Brandon Baer, if I could call him up, please, won the state champions. The girls' team won their 12th outdoor track and field and state title, continuing their streak, the VHS state record of the most girls' indoor track state titles across all classifications. This was accomplished in a true team effort with points earned in nine of the 17 events with 10 top eight finishes. Our Girls Outdoor Track Individual State Champions, Kaitlin Wolf in the Girls 3200 Meter. Boys Outdoor Track Individual State Champions, Ty Quest Terry, Boys 100 Meter. Relay Cole Dunlap, Thomas Coffey, Ty Quest Terry, and David Quezenberry in the Boys Four by 100 Relay Team. Coach Brandon Baer. I would also like to call up, please, Boys Tennis Coach, Madalena Kanska, and Frank Thompson, if he's here. Frank was Class Four Individual Single State Champion. Thompson has committed to Virginia Tech, where he will play for none other than his own father, Virginia Tech Head Coach Jim Thompson. If the coaches would like to say anything at this time? You're fine? All right, well, congratulations.
Next, if I could have Mr. Pauli come forward to recognize our October Seniors of the Month.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker, Dr. Meyer, Ms. Curran, members of the board. A very special highlight of our board meeting is the recognition of a Senior of the Month from each of our four high schools. Photos and leadership profiles are displayed on the presentation board in the lobby, and our presentation format provides a snapshot of each senior and a quote from their administrator or teacher who nominated them for this recognition. This evening, we will hear presentations from Dr. Tim Bynum, Principal of Blacksburg High School, Mr. Tony Dibler, Principal of Christiansburg High School, and Mr. Todd Lewis, Principal of Eastern Montgomery High School. The Senior of the Month for Auburn High School was unable to attend this evening, she is in a volleyball match. So we will start with Dr. Bynum.
It's good to see you all again. The Blacksburg High School Senior of the Month, I would like to call up Joshua Dwayne Golston with his mother, Nicole Golston. Joshua has a long list of activities and awards. He's President of the Habitat for Humanity, member of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, he's on the basketball team, indoor and outdoor track team, and a DECA member. He lettered in all of his sports as a sophomore. He volunteers at the Rowan Oak Rescue Mission, volunteers with Micah's Backpack Program, helps with Home for the Holidays Program. He plans to play Division One Football, although he's not committed yet, and wants to major in sports, marketing, and journalism. Amy Stevens, Josh's senior government teacher, says, "Josh is seriously one of the most friendly faces here at BHS. He always has a smile on his face, a nice word, and works hard at everything. He's a silent leader, caring, and super charismatic." Doug Day, Josh's varsity basketball coach, says, "Josh Golston is an outstanding young man who gives 100% both in the classroom and on the playing field. He is always working to get better and is willing to help his classmates and teammates do the same." Kim Radford, Josh's marketing teacher and DECA sponsor, says, "Josh is an exceptional leader and a team player, and this is his third year I've had him in my marketing classes, and he has proven he can work hard through challenging circumstances and always be successful." And Eddie Sloss, Josh's varsity football coach, says, "Josh Golston is a natural leader, and we are blessed to have him part of our student body and our football program. He is intrinsically motivated to be the very best at everything he pursues. In my opinion, Josh Golston is a worthy recipient of this prestigious award." Congratulations, Josh. Thank you. Good evening. It is my pleasure to inform the board that the Christiansburg High School Senior of the Month for October is Jesse Irazari. So at this time, I'd like to ask Jesse and his brother Blake Tiedem to come forward at this time to be recognized. Here is what teachers and coaches have to say about Jesse. Jesse encompasses everything you would want in a student athlete and exhibits the CHS core values of being responsible, respectful, and connected. Jesse would exhibit these traits whether there was anyone around to praise him for them or correct him if he wasn't doing them. It is ingrained in him to be that way because he values and understands the role of leadership. He is a great leader for the football team year-round and is an extension of our coaching staff and administration out on the field and in the classroom. Congratulations, Jesse.
Members of the board, Dr. Meyer, Ms. Whitaker, thank you for the opportunity to introduce the Senior of the Month for Eastern Montgomery High School, Samuel Jamison Serva. Sam and his mother and sister are here, and I'd like to ask them to come down to the front. Sam had multiple teachers recommend him to be the Senior of the Month for EMHS, and they universally praised the attributes that set him apart. Several noted that he is, quote, "involved in everything from clubs to sports to student government." Our athletic director stated that others always seem to notice and commend Sam on giving all in everything he does, whether he's playing a sport, being a teammate, or serving as a manager. Another teacher stated, "Sam has spent his entire high school career serving the Mustang community through hard work and conscientious attitude. Now he has emerged as a servant leader. He will be a fantastic SGA president, always seeking to do what is best for his classmates." It's my honor to introduce Sam Serva as the Eastern Montgomery High School Senior of the Month for October.
Thank you so much. We'll now have a 10-minute break while our board members congratulate our honorees.
Well, at this time in our each regularly scheduled meeting, the school board sets aside 30 minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak, the screens throughout the room, and the laptop will indicate the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when the three minutes has passed. As a reminder, the board does not respond to the speakers during the public address. I have two individuals sign up to speak tonight, and I will call their names, and please come forward, state your name and address, and then you have three minutes. First individual is Greg Tu.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Greg Tu. I live at 415 Piedmont Street in Blacksburg. My son is a third grader at Harding Avenue Elementary. He has also attended Margaret Beeks Elementary for kindergarten and first grade. In our first three years, we have been quite happy with our schools. But this year, my wife and I were shocked to learn our son was able to buy ice cream every day at lunch. Thankfully, that was fairly quickly changed to once a week, but we have new concerns about the lunch options. Our son eagerly awaits his ice cream day, but we have discovered he is buying something called a ZZ bar that has 11 grams of added sugar every day. He's buying one of these every day, along with choosing sugary grape juice as his beverage. Just the ZZ bar and the juice exceeds the daily recommended amount of added sugar for a child. This is not okay. So unless the policies change in a week or so and his lunchroom account reaches zero, we will send him off with the healthy food he needs and should be getting at school. That will make us the bad guys because he loves the treats, but at his age, he can't understand the long-term consequences of a bad diet. The short list of those consequences are tooth decay and obesity. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention states on their website that 35% of children aged 2 to 19 are overweight or obese. This is pitiful. I understand the à la carte purchases help offset the cost of running the cafeteria, but when the à la carte choices drive away the parents of students paying full price for lunch, the à la carte food becomes a self-defeating attempt to control cost. We would much rather have our son eat the lunch served at his school, but we will not support his unsupervised consumption of junk food on a daily basis. Now, I do want to be clear, we do not eat a perfect diet, not by a long shot, but as his parents, we want to be able to manage his, or monitor his eating habits as long as we can. ZZ bars and ice cream are our current concern, but we are also, but it was not our first frustrating experience with school food. When he was a student at Beeks, we found out he was eating a second breakfast every day, not because he was hungry, but because the choices were just so delicious for a first grader. And by delicious, his grab-and-go breakfast was best described as sugar with a side of sugar. The bag of food had 50 grams of added sugar, double the maximum recommendation. The tricked yogurt and Mandarin oranges served in sugar water were the biggest offenders, but the surprise was the Frosted Flakes. The cereal only had seven grams of sugar, but with a little research, I discovered the Frosted Flakes at school have reduced sugar to help meet nutritional guidelines, but what this amounts to is a clever strategy to build brand loyalty for the full-strength Frosted Flakes the kids beg for at the grocery store. The Frosted Flakes at Kroger have tripled the sugar. So instead of modeling nutritious eating, our schools are exposing our children to the foods that are driving our overwhelming national health problems. I'm here to strongly encourage you to do the right thing for our children by getting the sugar out of the schools. Thank you.
Next individual is Glenn Chilcote.
Thank you. I'm Glenn Chilcote. I live at 1611 Bold Springs Circle in Blacksburg. First, I want to encourage you to, when you're voting tonight on the teacher evaluation policy, and then when you begin to discuss the public address policy, that you take a look at Dr. Meyer's revisions, and you vote in approval of those amendments to the policies. I think they're fantastic, and I'm encouraging you to do that. Also, on October 5th, that's this Saturday, the Montgomery County Education Association is hosting the Fourth Annual Celebration of Education at Kipps Elementary School from 11 to 1, and I wanted to personally invite everyone on the board. I know that we're having Ms. Curran and Dr. Meyer there, and we're very thankful for that. This year, we're also having Secretary of Education Carney and Delegate Hurst coming to speak, so it'll be a great, it'll be a great morning/afternoon. We'll have music performed by the 3 o'clock band at Kipps and the band that also performed at the Teacher Field Day at the beginning of the year, bear in mind. So, we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the speakers. Let's sign up to speak. Thank you, and public address is now closed. The next item will be our consent agenda items. You'll see some field trips. There is one donation that I would like to, I would like to thank the anonymous donor for donating $4,200 to Margaret Beeks Elementary School to benefit a variety of programs at school. We appreciate it that much. Any other questions? If not, we'll approve them. We consider them approved as it is. I'm moving on. Our financial report, which is paying our bills. May I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
Second.
Any question regarding the bills? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We pay our bills. Next item is our business part of the meeting, and I will start with board member reports. Any board member would like to start?
So, last week, attended the community forum. Last week, attended the community forum for our six-year plan. It was very well-attended, a lot of good conversation, and can't wait to get started with this.
Thank you. Any other board members who would like to continue?
Well, go ahead. Last week, Dana and I got to go to one of the school lunches, and it was delicious, and I loved it, and I'm thrilled to see the students eating it because some of the lunches that I see come from home, I'm thrilled to see them eating the more nutritious lunches that I feel that we serve at school now. It was great. And we had a, exactly, it's getting eaten, and just myself trying to do better at eating. What I had was a spaghetti sandwich and I think, but a salad and some blueberries with Cool Whip on it. So, and, you know, it was delicious, I thought, very nutritional, I felt good about it. Next off, foreigner, oh my gosh, it was phenomenal. My daughter got me tickets Mother's Day, so that tells you how far back I've had my tickets. They were phenomenal. CHS Ensemble was phenomenal, and, you know, I guess I've just happened to be at the right place at the right time, and no disrespect to any of the other schools, but as we were walking down, I had my daughter, who's 19, and also was like, "Mom, that was amazing." walking down, I had my daughter, who's 19, and also was like, Mom, that was amazing. You know, you would think, a young student would, but she did. So I had her hand, and we were going out, and we had gotten a good parking place, and the Montgomery County School Bus was sitting there. And we're like, looking, and everybody's cheering on Christiansburg, and just the news crews were great, giving, you know, prestige to Christiansburg, and even Foreigner did a great job too with praising the students, and they were great. So they're yelling, everybody's cheering them on, and we're like, yay, Christiansburg! And somebody back behind us went, Liam Burge should have been up there. My head whipped around. I haven't even thought about it, and just went, well, I don't think so. Christiansburg all the way. She was just like, and I was like, oh, God, get out of here. But it was great. It was fun. It was just, they were thrilled. It was just so, it was exciting, and it was great.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go next. I know. I've got a, I've got a lot of things I'm going to try to go through really quickly. First thing, yes, I did my first webinar back in August, and touching on what the gentleman just came up and spoke about, the name of it was Building Healthy Schools and Healthy Students. They gave lots of strategies for inside and outside of the schools and around a lot of the places in Virginia. Very interesting, took lots of good notes, had good questions. They were, had opportunities for anything from K through 12, some really cool things I'd like to sit down and maybe talk to you guys about, maybe things that I found interesting, maybe we could possibly start. It was wonderful. And I, and I have to agree, our lunches, I think, are awesome, and there's kids eating. I've heard nothing but good things about it, and I'm so excited. And that spaghetti sandwich was phenomenal, Jamie and Goonan, and I got to, got to go to Christiansburg High School and do a short visit with Principal Dibler and eat the lunch and talk with the cafeteria ladies, get...
We were at the rehearsal of the...
That's right. I had to leave.
And we got a private concert by the, not only the chorus, but the ensemble, and got to see a preview before the concert, so that was, that was great. So, next thing. Attended several football games. Went to the Christiansburg versus Giles game. That was a great game again. Christiansburg came out on top with that. Went to the girls' Powderpuff game at Christiansburg High School last week. That was interesting. Never been to a girls' football game before. It was a lot of fun. The boys dressed up, cheer, and had the demon out there running around, so that was, that was a lot of fun, too. Attended some of the girls' fall softball practices at Christiansburg High School. Turf field still doing great, although I will tell you, when it rained last night, she had so many of those black beads on her cleats and into the house. I just, I about breathed. But anyway, the field is, the field is still doing great, and everybody, yeah, it could have been mud. That's hard. I'm really thankful it's not mud, and I'll handle the little black beads. Foreigner concert, it was great. I was very proud of the kids. They were awesome. They looked like they were having the time of their life. This will be a momentous time for them. They'll always remember it. I'm so glad that we, they were able to have that opportunity. And a shout-out to Foreigner because they drew attention to the music and the funding. So, I mean, wow, how many celebrity-type things to, I mean, what a way to draw attention to it. So I really commend them for, for being involved and mentioning that during their performance because they really didn't have to, but they did. Got to visit Eastern Montgomery High School and Eastern Montgomery Middle School for the Lions Club. I did the spot testing for the eyesight. The kids were phenomenal, respectful, great in both the high school. We did the 10th grade, all the 10th grade at Eastern Montgomery High School, and we did the fourth graders for the nine-year-olds at Eastern Montgomery Elementary School. I got a quick visit in with Principal Boyle. Great things going on there. I got to meet Mr. Lewis, the new principal at Eastern Montgomery High School. Great things happening there. Ms. Boyle actually is trying to get the first-ever middle school band started, so I wanted to mention to everyone, we're, they're going to rely a lot on donations because this is something she's trying to start up to pique interest as they go up into the high school level, and what a better way to do that than to start it early. So if anyone has any old instruments that they're not using, or they may come across that they've hidden back somewhere, put up, they are taking donations for instruments. They want the basic instruments, so they're looking for like clarinets, flutes, I think, trumpets, things like that. So if you all know of anybody that's got instruments laying around that aren't being used, please contact Mrs. Boyle at the elementary school in Eastmont. They could certainly use all the help they can get with that. Boys and Girls Club going strong there. They've got 30 already and 30 on a waiting list, so I was glad to hear that that's still going well in the schools. And I do want to say with our Corps of Cadets tonight, this is very fitting. I've actually spoken to several veterans in our community, and they are very excited about this Corps of Cadets program. It's really heartfelt, and I know Dr. Meyer, being a veteran, can probably relate to this as well. They express their gratitude, and they are very happy to see the schools take this initiative, and they're just, it's just something that's very gratifying to them, and they couldn't be happier to see that started here in their, in their own community. So just kudos to them and their performance tonight, too.
Thank you. Mr. Chabaka or Ms. Graham, do you want to jump in?
I'll go ahead, since you're both looking at me. So, real quick, I'll go over some things that I did, and just, I also want to try to use this time to maybe throw out some of the, maybe policy things that, that I might be working on, maybe behind the scenes or something like that, just so that you guys know the things that are on, on my mind, and if it's something that you want to be involved in. But I did get a tour of, I did tours of the, the old garage, I guess, at the, down in Cambria there, and Montgomery Central, and got a tour from Dr. Meyer of the new operations center, which obviously I think is really coming together nicely. I think it's a, it's definitely a good, I think is a good idea to keep those buildings and to utilize them in the way that we are. It's nice to see all of our operations kind of coming together in, I want to say in one spot, but really, to some degree, they're still in two spots here and there, so, but better two than three or four, so, so that's exciting. Also, got to tour the Corps of Cadet building in Christiansburg, which is nice to see that building being used in that way. I've also been involved on the calendar committee that Mr. Knotts has been heading up for the last, last month or two. Attended one meeting and had some conversations, and, you know, if that's something that any board members, you know, have any input on, or if your constituents probably have some input on, if you can't make the meetings, please feel free to reach out to me, and I'll try to get that stuff worked in. I'm also been, one of, one of the issues that's come up with, with Dr. Meyer and I recently, talking about, you know, how we pay coaches and other people who, staff members and other people who, from the community who volunteer and, and help with our, some of our extracurricular activities, trying to find ways to, you know, to compensate those people to, to help those programs and to just let those people know that we appreciate all the hard work that they put in with our kids. I met with Tommy on the construction PPEA and looked through the Volume Two, and I also did a little bit of just work, looking into some of the public comment policy stuff, which we're going to be talking about later today. So, that's it for me.
Thank you. And let's see, I did eat the lunch with these two ladies and watched the chamber choir rehearse before the Foreigner, and that was wonderful. They did a good job. They didn't even have their teacher in, in the room most of the time because the teacher was, Ms. Steele was being interviewed, so they did their own, you know, their own rehearsal. That was pretty cool. I attended Boys and Girls Club presentation that Corillian hosted, and I think Mr. Nutt and Mr. Garrison was with me, and, and it was nice to see what are their mission, what they're doing, and, and how they're serving in our schools. Two of the 21st-century grants, which needs to be renewed for them to continue at Shouseville Middle and Christiansburg Middle, and of course, Eastmont Elementary School just started with a new grant, so they don't have to worry about that. And Eastmont High School is self-sustained with local support. So they're, you know, if anytime our board wants to hear more about them, they're willing to come and present what they're doing and what kind of support, community support they will, you know, need to continue. I was at the Blacksburg High School Homecoming Parade. It was fun, teal-colored Jeep. I never rode in a Jeep before, so that was cool. And then I attended VSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference, and the emphasis was talk to legislators early. And there's an increase in the governor's budget for the next biennium, which is a good thing, and, but the priorities, which is early childhood, school safety, infrastructure, even the priorities are set, of course, the money depends how the elections will go and what makeup General Assembly will have for those decisions to be made. And I was part of the community summit that Ms. Franklin mentioned. I also stopped by at Moose Lodge over the weekend to see the Ving demonstration. That's, that's the Virginia Tech, and I think now the businesses, Walgreens and Sugar Magnolia from Blacksburg, and also FedEx packages can be delivered in the Christiansburg area through those drones. So it was fascinating to watch the drone bring the FedEx box and dropping it off and taking off and going back and, you know, bringing the Walgreen box back. And it is, of course, it is, you're going to use your app and order those things. You're just starting for a small area, and I can imagine what will the next 10, 20, 30 years will show if we start ordering things through the drone. That was pretty fascinating. And I started my yearly school visits, so I was in Harding Avenue, Places Fork, Gilbert Linkus, Christiansburg Elementary and Auburn Elementary School today, and that's five down, 15 to go. But it's always very exciting to visit those schools and see what the, what the kids are doing. I have to share, I was going to write this down earlier, but I have to share, one of the fourth graders in Christiansburg Elementary School shared this, "Proper preparation prevents poor performance." I think that's a good thing to just put it in a back burner, and then when you're preparing things, you know, make sure you're prepared. And it was a tongue twister. He thought that's the coolest thing to say, so he was keep, keep saying that, and I think that's a good one to keep in. And I think, I think that covers all my doings for the, for this month, so we can continue. I'm sorry, I don't know why I jumped. I think I look at this with, sorry about that.
I just want to remind our educators, PTAs, PTOs, and students, that the Montgomery County Educational Foundation grant cycle ends next Monday at midnight for your electronic application, and the hard copy needs to be in by two days later. And also, we will have a booth Saturday at the NCEA celebration, so if you have any questions, look for us there, and we'll be handing out little free things of both.
I'm terribly sorry. I didn't mean to do that. I thought I looked both sides. Now we can continue with our grants.
Okay. We have a few grants here to approve tonight. The first is dealing with honeybees. The Honeybee Grant includes the development of a computer encoding unit for elementary students. Students will use the program to process and analyze real-world honeybee data. We're asking you to approve this grant tonight.
May I have a motion to approve the grant title, Virginia Tech NSF Honeybee Data?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve our grant.
All right, very good. Next is STEM Grant. This STEM Grant is a potential partnership with the Office of Naval Research. The project proposes a series of hands-on design implementation of STEM activities. The proposal also includes a STEM summer camp for middle and high school students. We're asking you to approve this grant tonight.
I have motion to approve the grant.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions regarding this one? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve. STEM Grant.
Okay. This next grant I am really excited about. Classrooms to Careers. And actually, Mr. Husband could probably help us out if you have questions, but come on up. This is really just a unique grant. The Classrooms to Careers Grant will create part-time and full-time employment opportunities for high school students. Grant funds would be used to reimburse employers for 50% of student wages, encouraging employers to utilize our students. This project will continue to advance our work-based learning program. We're asking for approval tonight of this grant. What types of jobs would they be, would they actually be working in?
So, the majority of the companies that we have partnered with currently hire college students from Virginia Tech and Radford University, so they have a point person within their organization who is in charge of recruiting, hiring, onboarding, mentoring, and they each feel like they could, that person could then extend those same employment opportunities down to high school students. So they'd be doing everything from, you know, as they first start, pretty menial jobs where they're job shadowing people and then kind of figuring out what the organization is all about. But over, say, a 12-week summer position or part-time for an entire year, they would figure out their best skills and utilize the students in the best way that they can. The hope is that the student becomes a long-term employee and eventually a profitable full-time employee for that organization.
Like, what type of work?
I mean, it's based around cybersecurity and IT. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah, so it's built around our cybersecurity program. As you all know, we've made giant leaps with our cybersecurity program over the last year, two years. We've got about 175 students that are currently taking cybersecurity, so we really feel like this would be a good leap forward for that program to have students in meaningful work in addition to the three courses that they can take within our four high schools.
And this is also in line with something that we just figured out in the past couple of weeks. We are now able to offer an associate's degree in compute, what will be the term?
It's a, it's a general studies with computer science specialization. So this is really critical for our students that are interested in IT work because New River Community College and Radford have worked out a pathway so that there are not any wasted credits. If a student goes from New River Community College to Radford and they want to major in IT, so a student could actually graduate from Montgomery County Public Schools with a general studies associate's degree with a specialization in computer science, and then roll straight into Radford University as a junior, as an 18-year-old junior and only have two years of college to go.
That's awesome.
And we're the, we will be the only school division in Virginia that offers this associate's degree program.
Wow, that's so cool.
Pretty amazing.
Very excited that we've got a plan to offer this to all four high schools, that students at all four schools will have access to it as well.
That's awesome.
Yep.
That's wonderful.
That was sort of a side note, but really exciting, but we, go ahead.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
That, with that, will it be completely understandable to students how to get and obtain that? I do think sometimes things like that can be a little fuzzy on...
Sure. Yeah, we can...
What class you have to take, what's required, no, well, you shouldn't have, oh, well, we wish we should have, and, well, that's not going to be available, and...
Yeah. It's definitely taken us a couple of years to roll it out and get that communication piece out. We have 37 students that are currently going after some sort of associate's degree through New River, so it's taken a couple of years, but that number really is getting up there. I'll be in, in November, I'll be in all the IT classes, and then during January for academic and career planning night, I'll put together a presentation for all the schools to make sure that they're, they're well-informed. I've also got an email list that I can email all students directly, and when we've got our i's dotted and t's crossed with this, we'll make sure that they are all emailed when they, before they register for classes this spring to know that there are at least three different associate's degree options for them.
And we've gone from about five getting associate's degree, and you remember, we pushed this last year with our sophomores. Now we have 37 signed up.
Right. Oh, I think it was 39.
So they're getting information. They are getting information.
Like I said, I think a lot of it is just was, not so much us, but on the Rivers end a little bit, too. It was, you know...
We're working hard with them. They're great people, and I think we have a great, I think we have done really well in communicating this, and so, yeah, it's seen good results. Yep.
Thanks. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the grant title, Classrooms to Careers?
Second.
Motion and second. Any more discussion or any other questions? We did all little prior. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve the grant title, Classrooms to Careers. That's very exciting.
Okay, next, we have some policies we're asking you to approve tonight. First is Policy 5-7.5, the Mental Health Employee Policy. The proposed policy revisions to 5-7.5 provide clarification regarding employee absence for mental health reasons. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the revisions as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the revision to Policy 5-7.5 as presented? Second. I have a motion and second. Any questions, discussions regarding?
I appreciate the new language.
Yeah. It's very open. Any other comments? All those in favor, well, these are the policies. Shall we do roll call?
No problem.
Thank you.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Chabaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we're good.
And that passes. Thank you. Next, Policy 7-2.3, Mental Health for Students. The proposed revisions to policy 7-2.3 provide clarification regarding student absence for mental health reasons. Uh, tonight, we're asking you to approve the revisions as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the revisions to policy 7-2.3 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have motion and second. Any discussions, any comments on that one?
I guess we just want to make sure that everybody understands that this is already in the code of Virginia. And we are, we are just putting it in our policy so that we're, uh, you know, have it well documented. Um, and I'm, I'm very thankful that we're doing this for our students. Um, it, you know, it still has to be, you still have to get a note from home. Um, and I don't know, are we tracking the separate, the type of absence separate?
Yes.
Okay. Um, but it will be an excused absence if you, um, bring your note from home.
Any other comments or discussions?
I'll just say, I absolutely agree. Um, I think everybody should have the ability to have mental health days.
Yep.
Um, it's a long time overdue in this country that we're recognizing that we need to take care of ourselves mentally also.
Yeah, absolutely.
And to teach our students to do the same.
Yep.
I think it's significant that, um, you know, that, uh, the, the students through the, um, mental health committee also brought, uh, some of these things to our attention too, and we're pushing for this. I think that is, uh, significant and I appreciate, um, uh, I appreciate having the student reps on the board to give, um, to give their, um, input on that and also those who have come and spoken at, at the meetings in the past. I think that's, um, it, it's a good lesson, uh, I think for all of us to, to listen to our, the students and get their input on these things. But, you know, when, when what the students want and what we're reading in the research and the professionals are saying are lining up, I think it's kind of a no-brainer on this. If we're gonna de-stigmatize, um, uh, mental health, mental illness, we, we do have to treat it like you would anything else, so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm glad we're doing this. And I had somebody today tell me that, um, that they, I think, spoke to the, somebody at the state level and they couldn't think of another, uh, division that's doing this. There may be, but, but this is something that we're certainly, I think, uh, um, you know, taking a lead in. Which is nice.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I straightened up first, don't I forget what I did.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Kedan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and our students appreciate it. Is that right, students?
Yes.
All right. Okay, uh, next, um, employee hours. The proposed revisions to policy 5-3.6 provide clarity regarding employee hours, overtime and attendance expectations. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the revisions as presented.
I have a motion to approve the revisions, policy 5-3.6 as presented.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and second. Any questions regarding that policy, board members? We're all good.
We're ready.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Kedan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, employee evaluations. The proposed revisions to policy 5-3.6 bring parity to our policy and division practice. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the revisions as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the revisions to policy 5-4.5 as presented?
So moved. Second.
A motion and second. Any questions and any discussions on that one?
I think once again, I'm appreciative of having input from, um, our stakeholders and in this case, um, uh, some of the teachers, MCEA, um, reaching out to us, uh, on this one too.
Any other comments? Any one, one comment is, I think I appreciate the fact that we are looking into policies and we are making sure that our practices matches with the policies or vice versa, our prep policies matching with the practices. I think it's important that we, we, we do that. Um, I think we're ready.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Go ahead and say, you know, I'm supporting this for, one, for the reason that Dr. Meyer said, which is that we need to get our business done in a timely manner. I'm also supporting this, moving this extension to the end for our staff because they have to stay. And particularly those who have to stay for closed session. And so I don't think it's right for us to keep our staff here for two or three hours. We should definitely be staying here and listening to you however long we have to, or until we legally have to get out of here or extend. But I don't feel like the staff should. I also think it's important, though, you know, after we've heard, generally when we've heard from people for about an hour, at that point, we need to move on to our business because it's getting late. We have other people out there that are attending to that business. I think we owe it to our constituents to still be fresh and alert when we conduct that business and then come back before we adjourn to make sure we do hear all of our stakeholders at some point during the night. So that was my reasoning for supporting this, is that we're sort of, it's a little bit of a compromise. We're hearing everyone, but at the same time, we're making sure our business is being conducted in a timely manner. We get the public, most of the public and the staff out of here before we finish public comment.
Any others comments?
So I appreciate all the changes except for moving public address to the end of, after we have taken care of our business, especially closed session. Because the bottom line is, when people want to address us, it could be about things that we are getting ready to make a, to have a vote on or make a decision on. And if we've already done that, what is the point of having public address continue at the end of our meeting? In other words, basically just saying, we don't want to hear you on matters that are on the agenda, that will be, that action will be taken on. I have seen board members change their minds, ask more questions because of what we've heard during public address. And if we're not hearing it, then that opportunity has gone to our public. I have said, yes, we need to make sure we're getting our business taken care of while we are still in our right minds. And we, as Connie said, we owe that to our constituents. But I have a problem with this piece of it. So I like moving it to thirty, to an hour. The sign up while it's going on, I'm good with that. Those were my concerns, but I just can't see, I mean, it's, I just can't see that, that third change. It just doesn't make sense to me if what we're saying with public address is we want to hear from the public.
For me, since this is just discussion, and I don't know that I'm totally against, but I have to say, my concerns are with, and I'm okay with, with constituents having to sign up before they speak, but on the other hand, if they're doing it through the whole meeting, I just can't imagine how that's going to be. I mean, I just think you're going to have people scurrying around trying to figure out, well, you were supposed to sign up. Well, I didn't sign up. Well, where's the sign up sheet? Well, I'm not sure I know where that's at. And it's going to happen. I mean, especially when you get people that aren't used to coming to public address. They don't understand, they don't know. And then all of a sudden, in the middle, you're, they're going to be fishing to try to figure out, and that's going to cause confusion and chaos, I think. And as far as doing it to an hour, you know, I'm all about hearing from everyone. I've been here till midnight, twelve thirty, one o'clock. I'll do whatever. That's what we're elected to do. But when the meeting gets out of hand, I'm not going to vote for it to extend. And that's my problem with it going past thirty minutes, because that gives us the opportunity to say, wait a minute, I know everybody's on an emotional roller coaster, and everybody feels strong about a certain issue, but that doesn't mean you shouldn't conduct yourself professionally and, and be dignified while we're all here listening. So I don't know that I, thirty minutes is ten speakers. So you, that's, you know, and it's an opportunity to say, wait a minute, okay, is this getting out of hand? Do we want to bring it back in? And even if, because for an hour of, I need everybody to be quiet, I need you to stop, how many times you going to bang on, you know, that happens. We run into that. We've seen it. So to me, stopping at thirty minutes at least gives everybody an opportunity to calm down a little bit, you know, and it gets the crowd in check as well as with us. That's just my thoughts, you know. And I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the signing up. It, it's fine. I just think, like I said, if you're doing it through the meeting, it's going to cause a lot of confusion. And I just think either you sign up before, or you just say, you know, if there's anybody else who wants to address the board. I don't think we need to take it any longer than three minutes. I would be even fine with less. Just because I think we get into sometimes, just like I'm doing right now, we can get into emotions and, and getting carried away onto other subjects and, and speaking about things that, it's just monotonous, it becomes monotonous, and I don't mean that disrespectful to anyone, but it does.
Yes, it's repetitive sometimes. Any others comments and thoughts?
Well, as I recall, when Dr. Meyer was talking about the sign up sheet, the idea was to have it up here. So the person comes up and signs it as they, they're essentially signing in, is what they're doing. They're, they're not rifling around trying to find it. It's up here when they walk up. And it'd be very easy for the chair also to say, the next person who's interested in speaking, please come up and sign up while this person is speaking. So I think, I think that part of it can be resolved easily.
Okay. But with, is there a reason legally that we have to have them sign up?
Well, we have to verify their residence, because that is in our policy, that they be residents.
But if some, I was going to say, is somebody going to be sitting there looking that up really quick before they start speaking?
No, no, they're, I mean, we're putting them on their honor system, but they're signing something saying they are a resident.
Right, right, but they're still getting to speak their mind. We have no way to prove that they're not, you know, they can, that's, I hear what you're saying.
Right. Well, we don't now either, but at least now we have a written record.
Exactly, so to me, that's kind of here or there.
It's also nice if we, as board members, have an opportunity to reach back out to that person. We have their information.
And that's true.
If they provide an email as well, then we have the opportunity later to go back. So I think it's a, I think it provides very valuable information.
And I'm fine with that, if they come up and sign up there, but like I said, if we have a sign up sheet in the back of somewhere that, you know, somebody's, oh, you got to do this, you got to do that. And that's just a lot of.
No, that was not, I don't think that was the intent.
Yeah, that wasn't the intent. Any others?
But do you understand what I'm saying with that?
It would be, we logistically would get it where it's running smooth, where it wouldn't be a big deal for someone to do that.
You know, you get a, a little grandma or a little grandpa, they don't know how to do those things.
Well, straight, well, greatest of its types.
I think my support in extending to one hour before voting, you know, I thought it will cover more people, whether, you know, whether sign up or they're signing up during the, during the public address part of the meeting. And that will, from three, three, three minutes, averaging twenty individuals plus minus to be able to address the board. And that's a, that's a pretty good number. Under normal conditions, unless we have a really, really hot topic, we really don't get more than twenty individuals. So that will cover everybody most of the time. And I see Ms. Franklin's, you know, point as well. So we can keep it as, you know, sixty minutes, and then, then we'll vote to, depending on how many more people wants to address, we will vote then to extend. But then we have to be, you know, careful about if we have a big agenda, you know, then we have to, I guess, as a board, we'll then and there make a decision, the agenda is loaded, we really can't do that, even if we want to hear you all, that kind of thing. And that will be, at that time, we will decide. That will be my, my suggestion.
And if it has been a, a issue that we have had repeated comment, emails, communications with, then we can say, okay, an hour, we've, we've got enough, right?
Except we've never once voted to not extend. And that's the point here. And after an hour, we have heard the same thing over and over. And I, and I like Jamie's point. I like Jamie's point about taking a break. You know, you have that break. People get to think about what they're going to say.
They do, I'm sorry.
And that's why I support putting the extension at the end of the meeting. And I, and I won't support going past an hour. I just won't support it.
Yeah.
I, I think from my point of view, it, it is the, I, I hear what everybody's saying, but there still is this issue that we have, that when I've seen this happen in the eight or nine years that I've been attending these school board meetings, is a group of parents, I mean, nothing against them, they're, they're passionate about something, you know, somebody's trying to close their school, or change the start times, or whatever it is. And we may not be voting on it. I don't think we've, I don't know that we've ever done it, that I've seen it on a night where we're necessarily voting on something, although I'm sure it has happened.
Eventually, we do.
Eventually, we do.
But those things are up, usually for several meetings.
But those things usually happen ahead of time, and people, you know, to me, I look at it as, somebody decides, we're going to turn this into a public hearing for three and a half hours. And so how do we balance, how do we balance, you know, the needs of the board to conduct our business along with hearing everyone else? And, you know, it's not nineteen eighty-five, or seventy-five, or whatever anymore, and we have other ways people can get hold of us. We have, I, I think we do offer a lot of opportunities. I, I don't want people to feel like they're being turned away either. And I don't, I don't know that this is as straightforward as we are making out, making it out to be. And Ms. Bond, to your point, you know, I've, and again, you're allowed to grow and change your mind too, but I mean, I have sat in the audience and watched you vote to just extend until we've heard everybody, you know? And so from that point of view, I mean, the idea that I'm going to punish somebody who wants to talk to me because somebody else is hooting and hollering, I mean, these things do tend to be emotional, I, you know, I, I don't know. And how do we take, you know, how do we make it fair? How do we take that out of it, you know, that we're going to, we're going to vote to hear everybody from this community, but when it comes to this other community, maybe we're not? I mean, those biases do creep in, right?
Right, but that's why I said you could have that opportunity if the, if it gets out of hand only. As I said, I've been here till midnight, and I'm fine with hearing everybody. But I just think when things get out of hand, and I hear what you're saying about that person that might want to speak, but generally, that's not the case there with them. You know, the ones that's, but that's the only time I've ever voted not to extend it. And it was out of control that night. It was. So, you know, that's, that's something that concerns me.
So.
But this does allow us to hear everyone.
Right.
Just be, part of it's at the end.
Which, which could be, you know, didn't make any difference at that point. I could compromise and, and say that if we have a public address that we need to hear folks, folks want to be heard, then we adjust our agenda. You know, if there is nothing on that agenda that we absolutely have to take care of at, at that evening, then we adjust our agenda so that we're not making decisions or having conversations when we shouldn't, to be able to make sure we're hearing from the public.
So could we, could we, at the time of the vote, at the hour, make the decision then according to the agenda as to when we do it? Either continue at that moment, or to move it at the end based on the agenda? Does that make sense?
So if there's something up for vote that they're discussing, that the public is coming to us for, we would do it, we would decide whether to extend or not.
Well, I don't think that's what he asked, but.
No, he's given the option of either extending right then, or extending later in the meeting, because the item of discussion is on the agenda to be voted on.
Right. Either way, we're voting to extend, one way or the other, whether it's afterwards or at that time.
You know, what I'm saying is, if we have five items on the agenda, and only two of those items are something that we need to take some type of action on, then we drop the other three items till the next meeting, and still extend the public address.
And my concern there is, we probably have staff members sitting there that had come that night for that item, and now we're going to make them come back two weeks later and sit through it again.
Or maybe not a staff member even.
Right, or people we brought in from out of town.
You know, I love you guys, but that's what you get paid for. Our public is who we're supposed to be serving.
And I don't think, I don't think it's an either or here. Let me, let me ask this, on, you know, some of the, the town council meetings, they will have public address, and they will also have a public hearing if they're, you know, voting on something. We don't really do that, so our public address sometimes does turn into a public hearing. And I think, Ms. Graham, this is what, maybe between you and what Dr. Meyer said, maybe we're, kind of where we're getting, which is basically, if you have something where there's a lot of people that want to come out and we're voting on it that night, we could basically put it on the agenda as a public hearing that would not, and, and maybe we could vote to do, to do that too. And I, I reached out to Ms. Drake earlier in the week to find, I mean, I, I think from what I understand, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Drake, but I, I think as the board, we always have the power to change our agenda at any time and add those things to it. So if we show up and there's two hundred people out here, and we're voting on something that these people have come to speak to us about, we could always do that, and I could support a mechanism to do that. But what I'm talking about is when some, when, when a group of, when, when a large group of people shows up, it's not something we're necessarily voting on, we've got other business that we should have a process there that, that lets us hear everyone out, not, maybe not everyone, but lets us hear the concerns and still lets us get our, our work done.
Right, and that's what I propose. We just adjust.
Sure, the, I mean, the devil's in the details, though, I think, on how it happens.
Yeah, I think Dr. Meyer summarized it pretty well.
So making that choice as to what it's going to look like.
After, yeah, after the first hour.
After the hour.
First hour, yeah.
But, but I don't know that I would always support an open choice, because as Ms. Froggit said, when you have the room full of two hundred people, it's going to get emotional, and it's going to be very hard to vote otherwise. Now, if it's something, if there's conditions, if it's something we're voting on that night, maybe we could do something like that. Amend, you know, amend it to a public hearing at that time, or something like that.
For a public hearing, don't we need to advertise that?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Technically only for your budget. State law requires that you have a public hearing on your budget, and it must be advertised in advance by a certain number of days. That's the only state statute that I'm aware of regarding public hearings.
Okay. So.
As they pertain to you.
What, what would be the difference if we just said, okay, now you're going to come and speak to us, and we're going to call it public hearing, but now you're going to speak to us, and we're going to call it public address?
The public hearing, if I'm understanding, Mr. Jabaka, we would, you guys would, I won't be here, would turn that, would turn that into a public hearing that continues on right then, but if it's something you feel like you're not voting on.
Or perhaps before the vote, for something.
Right. Before that vote. But if it's something, you know, just an issue that's coming up, that we're hearing about, we're hearing from a lot of people, it's not something on there to be voted, then it could just be put at the end.
Exactly.
And we could get through the business, and they can take the speak after.
And maybe that is the same thing, I don't know, but it's something.
Yeah, I don't know why we would need to name it differently.
You wouldn't necessarily have to, but I think you want to give yourself an option.
Sure.
And that might be a good option. But, I, I mean, Ms. Franklin said it right. You have the option of extending right then, put it in policy that you can extend right then, or you can move it, extend it, but move it until the end of the meeting after closed session.
If it's not something we're voting on that night.
It's not something you're voting on that night.
I, I would say at least this, that I think the default should be that we move it to the end of the meeting, and then we can always vote, if it is something that we're hearing from a lot of people on that we're voting on that night, we always have the option to move it to a different time.
And I think that's a good, because then people are coming with the idea, okay, I might have to stay late, you know, that the policy is I may have to stay late, but the board may give me the opportunity to speak earlier if they feel like it's something, you know, that needs to be done then. I think, I like that compromise.
So we'd ask for two votes, one to extend, and then one to continue after that hour immediately, and, or one, or the other option being to the end.
Right, you would only have to vote if you were not putting it off to the end. In other words, the default would be to put it off to the end if you wanted to extend, but continue right there.
Somebody would have to make a motion, and we'd have to go through that, I think.
Yeah, the motion would be to continue it at this moment, or not, it would be, it would go to the end.
And right now, don't we have, remind me, after each thirty minutes, or after each hour?
Yeah, after each thirty minutes.
Each thirty minutes, I think.
Right now, it's each thirty. The way it's written, it wouldn't happen until the end of the first hour is when it would happen.
Right, so I think we still need to think about that next hour, if it is something we're voting on, if we're hearing the same thing over and over and over again.
And that's what we're saying this would do.
It would allow us to have a second time to vote.
Yeah, I mean, you can always say that, yeah.
So after hearing Ms. Bond, do we want to stay with the thirty minute vote?
Yes.
And then the hour vote becomes two votes, the extend, extension and the win.
No.
No.
Yes, that's what I just heard. I need your help, because I got to write this thing. And so I'm trying to understand what you're, what you want. That's what I just heard you say.
So I guess the question on the table right now is, do we do thirty minutes, or do we do an hour?
All right, question right now, thirty minutes, and then at the hour, we'll come back to that. Ms. Bond says, let's do it at the first thirty minutes, and, or every thirty minutes that we're doing it.
That's what, how it would work, that's how it is now.
Right, that's how it is now, that's no, that's no change. Okay?
Because, like, how often is that going to happen? Is that we vote to extend?
Right.
It, it's very rare.
So am I hearing?
And usually when you do, it's because you've got a room full of people, if you're about one issue.
That's right, and you want to have to make some different decisions. So, you know, that's, that's what, like I said, and it gives you an opportunity to regain everything, figure out what you're doing, give you another thirty minutes.
But I think after the hour, we should be able to say, if this is not something we're voting on at this meeting, let's move it to the end of closed session.
Except the default would be already to move it to the end of closed session. You would vote if you wanted to continue it right then.
Right, right, at the thirty minute mark.
At the hour mark.
The second thirty minutes.
The second thirty minutes, yeah.
All right, so, so what I'm hearing, all right.
I like that better.
Can I ask for clarity?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, we're going to continue voting the first, the first thirty minutes, we'll vote to extend. If it does, then we'll, at the end of the next thirty minutes, which is the hour, we will then vote to extend again.
Correct.
And then the next vote would be to, we need to get to wording, do we continue at that moment, or do we push it to the end?
Right.
I, I don't, I think you're always voting to continue to extend every thirty minutes.
Right.
By, by our new policy, when you vote the second time, that automatically comes at the end of the meeting. Now, we always have a choice, and I think it will be exceedingly rare, we always have a choice as the board to, during the discussion for that vote, you have a choice to, to move it around in the agenda however you see fit. But that would not be a standard vote.
That would be if we're voting on something.
That's what we just said.
Yeah.
That would be if we're voting on something.
Yeah.
Most likely, yes. The default would be, any extension after the hour would be at the end of the meeting. But if it's something important, something you're voting on, then you could have a second vote to.
To extend it again.
Not to extend it again. You already have voted to extended it, you would have a second vote to move that back right after that time period where you are right now.
To change the agenda.
To change the agenda, essentially.
Okay.
So you have a vote to extend, and then.
A vote to extend.
You could have a vote to change the agenda, if you don't want to leave it off until the end of the meeting.
Okay, so first, first she said, a vote to extend, and then to say whether we put it immediately, or continue at that time, or put it at the end of the closed session?
Now, what I'm saying is, the default would be that it would be at the end of closed session. You would only have an additional vote if you wanted to change the agenda to move it up earlier.
For something we're voting on that night.
For something we're voting on.
Because that's not what was just said, but anyway.
All right, let us play with it.
Yeah.
Let us play with, I, I, I think I've got an idea of what.
My, you know, I'm going to make my one more point before we move on, since the reason I wanted to have it from thirty minutes to sixty minutes from the first, you know, get go, because now that we are letting people sign up during the public address, I thought maybe the first thirty minutes will fill relatively faster, and then, you know, having it hour from the beginning, it will, you know, eliminate that extension of the first vote.
Right.
You know, but again, I, I, I'm, I'm fine if you want to keep it thirty minutes, but I thought that will, you know, give us a more opportunity for the people to be able to talk before we do any voting.
More continuity, in other words, without an, without an interruption, basically.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that was my.
And I'm fine with either way.
That was my, that was my point in the sixty minutes initial.
And with my experience, when we've got that many people coming out before we vote or make a decision to further it, like especially the other thirty minutes, not the first thirty minutes, but the second thirty minutes, someone will, or the chair will usually say, how many people still want to address? That gives us, it gives us an idea that there's ten people out there that want to speak to us, there's two people that want to speak to us. So from what I've seen is, say, if we run over that first thirty minutes and there's, you know, five people that want to speak, we extend it, but you know your, what your timing is. You know you've got, you know, a smaller amount of time, fifteen minutes that's going to be involved. So, you know, sometimes I think we just have to, like, you know, Mark said, it's not always cut and dry, it's just, you know.
Well, the one thing that I do like is that you need to still sign up, but you can do it up until the end of, right? So that still.
Including the end of the night, if necessary.
That still gives us an idea of how many people still want to speak. And if they really want to speak, they're going to get up and come up and sign up, right?
But from what I'm understanding, they're only signing up when they come to speak.
No, prior to. They can keep signing up while ten people are speaking.
Yeah.
They can still be signing up if they want to speak. And then we will know, and we will have a record of how many people said they still want to speak.
And in fact, even if that thirty minutes, the chair could say, hey, if you're interested, go ahead, get the piece of paper, fill it out, and bring it up when you come to expedite things, so.
And also let us know that we have ten more people that want to speak, or we have twenty more people that want to speak, and that can determine what we're going to do as far as extending the meeting.
I, I think there's some leeway with the staff on how you, if, if we pass that part, the sign up part, I think there's some leeway on how you want to exercise that. I mean, one thought that I've had, is I've gone to meetings where I have intended to talk, a bunch of other people got up and said what I was going to say a lot more eloquently, just going to shut up and, and, and let it go. I have seen a lot of times with our sign up process where people feel, their, their name gets called, and so they feel like they have to come up. So, you know, from that point of view, I mean, I could see a scenario where, you know, Brenda can pull the, not pull it, but can move the sign up sheet at the beginning, you know, in that ten minute break before we have public comment, and then the chair can continue to call people up and just have them sign the sheet as they come up, or something like that, but.
We'll figure the logistics.
Yeah, the logistics is easier, just the wording in the policy, important, so we follow it.
We have some good ideas how to make it.
Look good.
Make it smooth for, for the folks here.
Okay.
All right.
Moving on.
We'll work with it.
Yep.
Bring it back next meeting.
Something.
So, next, next meeting will be the first reading, or the, this was the first?
Uh, no, no.
We don't know yet.
I think next meeting.
The next meeting will be first reading of whatever we come up with next. Will be the second reading, actually. Yeah, the next reading will be the sec, the next meeting will be the second reading of the change.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah.
It will not look like it does today, it, but we're going to have a third reading, unless you all choose otherwise to do so.